Really long agenda here. Um, I was gonna welcome, uh, Consulor Ferraro to your first work session.
Thank you.
Um, if anybody doesn't know, the mayor's traveling for an energy conference with NOPEC. And if you haven't caught on, Mr. Finley is not gonna make it tonight. Um, so let's see, I, we have approval of minutes, I think, um, we're good there. But I did notice that on the, on your, uh, ordinance eighty, Benny.
Yes.
We're gonna have to replace, um, Mr. Finley for a second. Anybody want that?
I'll do it.
Okay. And did you wanna talk about that?
Um, I put together a synopsis of the work I've done on eighty twenty twenty four. Um, I don't wanna reiterate everything I've already said for the last three times 'cause there's been one first reading and two second readings. Um, if there's any questions, uh, I'm, I can, you know, I'm open to questions. I think I've explained any, everything the best that I could. I put this, this synopsis together today, so if any of yous have any concerns about this or any questions, feel free to ask. I mean, um, this is what the residents want. Uh, I think they should be able to have a choice. And I think I've, uh, dealt with all the concerns of the planning commission and we were able to answer those.
Tell me what you were, tell everyone what you, we were talking about with, uh, so, with solid fences, about how there's a need, or there's a want for.
There's a want for solid fences, um, for a couple of different reasons. It's, it's, it's a privacy issue, they're better known as privacy fences to, to the average person. Um, the only thing that was allowed up until this point is, as far as that goes, is a box type or board on board, board on one side, board on the other side. There's supposed to be, as it states now, twenty-five percent of air and light that uh, is, uh, can pass through there. Uh, some of the issues were, uh, two safety issues. If there was a side driveway on a corner lot, uh, the obstruction of the view of any, by any fence of a traffic, a vehicle or pedestrian traffic would be obstructed. That was resolved ahead of time, uh, by having a, uh, introducing a ten-foot setback from the right of way. And that was already initiated before we got that far to continue talking about the solid fence issue. Save, the second safety issue was the police could not see a problem in the yard. My rebuttal, after talking to the police department and, uh, being on, in the profession for forty-five years, is the police aren't, number one, aren't even gonna look through a fence or over a fence, and you can only see at an angle through a board on board. You're looking at an angle, you're not looking straight onto anything. Okay? And then, of course, you leave yourself open, it's not tactically sound. Um, it, it has, uh, it's unsafe for a police officer to try to get anything done on one side of a fence as a, and try to use it as a cover, it's concealment, it's not cover. And I talked, I had several conversations, uh, with Chief Acapovic about this. And as far as he's concerned, he has no problem with, uh, solid fences in the city. Wind damage, uh, is one of the things that the planning commission brought on. Upon speaking with the company that has installed numerous fences in our city, wind is not an issue. The fences will withstand, uh, wind gusts up to a hundred and fifty miles per hour. They will not be damaged by, uh, winds up to that point. Most damage to fences is done by the trees that fall on the fences, not the wind itself. The cost factor for the average half acre lot is in mine and yours, I think you live in a similar type development in another part of the city, and so you, so you got probably a half acre there. And the, uh, to, uh, to stay with the statute as it, as it is written now, if you were to get a, uh, box or a board on board style fence, it would be up to six hundred dollars more than a solid fence. And probably a little bit more, and that was even mentioned, uh, by one of the members of the planning commission that, you know, since somebody I know has got a fence back in the day, it's probably another twenty-five percent more expensive than it was back then to have that done. And in my opinion, what it, and, and they never brought up a vinyl fence, they strictly zeroed in on wooden fences. Okay? There's a lot of vinyl fencing around, if you look hard enough, that is solid. And I travel a lot here during basketball season for my grandson, my wife was in Elyria tonight, and I've noticed that there are plenty of venues that have solid fences in their yards. It's not something new or unusual. And I feel that it came down to, by the planning commission and, and others that I had spoke to that were not necessarily in favor of it, they just doesn't like the way a privacy fence looks. It's, it's, it's a very simple thing. And it's in my opinion that residents should have the choice. They've been asking for it for quite a long time. I've heard about it constantly from a lot of different people, and also, uh, talked to somebody else in the building department that answers those calls. And if a, a privacy fence is allowed, it'd be, it would also be a major cost saving for the residents that choose that over a board on board or a box style fence. And I, unless you have any more specific questions, that's about all I can say. This whole thing took me about six months to put together when I started it wholeheartedly by contacting people and looking up different ordinances and stuff for approximately a half a dozen cities. Um, as I stated in the past, uh, it's, it started with way back, it started about in the, uh, with the definitions that I immediately thought there was no such thing as two front yards because it's a corner lot. We debated that fact over and over again. Uh, not only did I deal with the planning commission, I did deal with the BZI, I spent an hour at, uh, uh, Mr. Palado's house discussing it with them. And it got kinda comical because we, he asked me to look out his backyard and explain it to him. I actually went out the door, we went outside, I looked around, he's got a very nice yard. And I, he says, I says, this is your side yard, it's not your front yard. He says, well, who's to say it's not my fr- front yard? I says, it's not your front yard. He says, what's my front yard? I says, over there where the address, the driveway and the front door is at, that's your front yard. Look at how much extra yard you could have if you wanted to fence it in. His, his yard is not fenced in, and he does live on a corner. I, I mean, it, it's, it, it's what you think of it, it's, you know, personal preferences, but I, I still believe that the residents who are asking for it should have that choice. It's, it's not something, uh, everybody's agreed from the time I started this over six months ago, that the, uh, zoning and, and, uh, building issues, uh, ordinances and statutes are, uh, not only obsolete, but they're ambiguous.
Not everybody would agree with that.
Well, the people that I sat in on in that room did agree to, did agree to that. But the cost factor to go over the whole program, um, to do it right by a professional, Twinsburg did it, it ran around a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Chip it off one piece at a time, right?
Yes. And that's why I said I will bandy this as much as I can.
Well, it seems like it's not gonna cause a huge impact, being that so many neighborhoods have HOAs. I can't imagine the HOAs would.
Correct.
Adopt this, so that we're not gonna just see overnight everyone having solid fences put up everywhere. It's gonna be.
Exactly.
A, a smaller, you know, a smaller percentage of the total, uh, properties in the city and then people that want them.
Exactly. And there's a lot of people that already, uh, were satisfied, put their fence up with what they had to work with, so you can take quite a bit of that out of the, out of the equation, like you're saying, you know. There's just people that just went with the program and did it the way it was listed at that time.
But just so everyone caught this, you know, the planning commission approved everything, except for the solid fences, but we are voting on having the solid fences in here. So, so the planning commission can't make any laws, they can just make recommendations to council, so.
Correct.
Their recommendation was to not allow solid fencing, but, uh, the vote here is gonna be including solid fencing.
And I do have the memorandums on that, if anybody wants to see them.
So if you do get a, a third reading tonight, the only difference between the ordinance that was distributed to you this week and the last version is the solid fence revisions to eliminate that twenty-five percent light and surface visibility. So if you do give it a third reading, the next motion would need to be a motion to amend the ordinance to conform with the most recent version that you received, so you would need to make that motion too.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Thank you for helping me explain that, I really appreciate it. The questions were good, they were proper, and I was able to answer those.
Did you have any questions?
Nope.
Are you interested in doing third read tonight, I imagine?
Oh, definitely. I wanna get this done and over with, it's had a first reading, two second reads. And there are people, there are people that have personally told me they are waiting in abeyance for this to pass so they can make a contract with the fence company.
Do you, do, um, the two, two of you wanna do the motion then?
Yeah, do the motion. You do the motion, I'll second it. I'm not gonna pull that out of thin air.
And I, I thank you for the patience that everybody's had with me, including everybody outside of council that I spoke to and, and got opinions and input from it. And, uh, help, help me make a decision to continue on and not just let it go.
All right, we'll do that at third. The only other item that's on the agenda that I thought I'd mention, we have a motion on here to accept a donation. Um, and then, earlier today, I did speak to the mayor, he mentioned, um, that I bring up that, I guess, and I don't remember this, did we cancel a council meeting during Merdonia school break last year?
Spring break, not last year, but I think maybe two.
No, we haven't passed.
Yeah.
We have, okay, so I'm just gonna bring it up, I think it's the twenty-seventh next month. We still have, I think, two meetings to decide if we're gonna, if we're gonna do that, unless you guys wanna do it tonight.
I mean, I, I would say if that's a request and it's a viable request, let's just get it done tonight, not on the way.
Okay.
And then people can plan accordingly, whether it be you, anybody else in the room wants to plan accordingly, make other arrangements because of children, grandchildren, or whatever.
So March twenty-seventh, okay. Um, anyone want to make that motion?
You do it.
I'll do it, and then, uh, Mr. Ventura, you wanna second it?
I will do that.
All right. And, uh, just since we're on the topic, I will actually not be here for the meeting on the thirteenth, because it's OSU spring break, and we have a trip, like, that I did not realize conflicted with a meeting until recently, so. Um, I think that's it, unless anyone else has anything else they wanna talk about. Give you some minutes.
Just a quick question.
Yep.
Um, so anytime a donation comes in to the police department, do we put it on the?
It's, it's to any depart, any part of the city.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just like transparency and visibility, okay.
Mark, do you wanna elaborate on that?
It's just a auditing measure essentially, council needs to accept any property or monetary amounts that the city receives.
Got it.
It can be done as it comes in, it can be done periodically, like you can do it on a quarterly basis or semi-annual basis, it's really up to you guys how frequently you wanna do it, but.
Got it. Okay. And it varies, I mean, this is a twenty dollar, we've had significant donations to the city.
And then, just so you know, Matt, we then, in finance, create a purchase order for twenty dollars for the donation, so it's segregated and we know eventually where that money went.
Got it. Okay. Thanks. Anybody else doesn't have anything, just give some time back before we have to start, two minutes?
So, no time to walk over to the K D S.
All right. Welcome, everybody, to the February thirteenth city council meeting. Uh, Mr. Hoover, would you please take the role?
Mr. Brand.
Here.
Mr. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Jarvis.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here.
Okay, um, and then, uh, Chaplain O'Brien, if you wouldn't mind, with the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
As we gather here this evening, let us take a moment to reflect on the responsibilities entrusted to us as leaders and citizens of our community. May we approach our discussions with wisdom, fairness, and a spirit of cooperation, always striving to serve the best interest of those who call our city home. Let our words be guided by respect, our decisions by integrity, and our actions by a genuine desire to build a stronger, more united community. May we also remember those who worked tirelessly to keep our city safe, thriving, and welcoming. From our educators and first responders to the many hands that serve behind the scenes, may we find common ground even in our differences, embracing the diversity of thought that strengthens our city. The gratitude for the opportunity to serve, may we move forward with hu- with humility and purpose, always seeking the greater good. Amen?
Amen.
Now, please face the flag and join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Um, before I get started, I just wanna welcome Councilman Ferraro to his first meeting. Thank you. And I just wanna mention, um, the mayor is, um, at a energy conference with NOPEC tonight, and that's why he's not here this evening. Um, next item on the agenda is approval of minutes, so I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the Tuesday, January twenty-first, Wednesday, Janer, uh, special council meeting, the Wednesday, January twenty-second special council meeting, and the Thursday, January twenty-third regular council meeting.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Upstain.
Um, I believe we have no public comments. Do we have any correspondence?
No, sir.
All right. The first item on the agenda for legislation is ordinance eighty twenty twenty-four.
Yes, sir. I, uh, would ask that, uh, offer ordinance number eighty twenty twenty-four for its third and final reading by title only.
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
An ordinance amending portions of chapters eleven thirty-three and eleven seventy-one of the codified ordinances of the city of Macedonia relative defenses.
Mr. Ventura.
I would ask that we take and, how is?
So, motion to amend, uh, ordinance eighty twenty twenty-four to conform with the most recent version distributed to council this week.
Yes, that.
Say so moved.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, any discussion, Mr. Ventura?
Uh, not unless there are any other questions. Uh, I think, uh, with the help of.
Wanna give a brief synopsis of it?
There, there came, uh, it came to my attention, and it started with, um, corner lots having two front yards, which prohibited certain fencing, uh, issues, prohibited, uh, fencing issues, which created by statute a loss of the use of, uh, a vast amount of their yard. So we started off with changing the definitions to coincide with actually having a front yard, a side yard, and a backyard. So that alleviated a lot of the problems with, uh, that we started off with, with fences and gates. To continue with that, um, for some time now, the ordinance was changed about twelve years ago, I believe, from, uh, having been allowed, um, solid fences, uh, privacy fences, which I call them, um, and they were no longer permitted. So I've he- heard about from a lot of different residents that their request for privacy fences have, have been denied or sent to the BZI for a variance, which, uh, costs residents more money, another hundred dollars, and another hour, another time at dinner tonight. And those meetings are only held once a month. Uh, it was in my opinion that the, uh, all of the items brought up to me, and all the issues brought up to me, I was able to have a rebuttal for them, or they had already been addressed and changed, uh, in this reading. And I believe that the, uh, the cost, uh, was a factor also, that to use the proposed, uh, fences, uh, box or board on board is an additional cost factor to the residents, which I don't believe they should have to have unless they want it. So it is my opinion that residents should have a choice, save a little bit of money, and still enjoy as much of their property as humanly possible. And I thank everybody that has, uh, given me some input and understands, uh, the ordinance.
Any further discussion or questions? All right, what's your pleasure on ordinance eighty?
I make a motion that we pass and post according to law, ordinance, uh, number eighty twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, motion eighty passes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on that. Uh, any motions or other legislative actions?
I can make a motion to accept a donation in the amount of twenty dollars from a resident Jay Johnson to the city's police department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Um, we do not have a mayor's report this evening, but if he was here, I'm sure he would say, put the phones down and drive, so I'll pass that on. Um, and that'll take us to committee reports, any committee reports?
Sorry, were you wanting to make a motion about the March?
Oh, I did, thank you very much for, for keeping me on my toes. Um, I would like to make a motion to cancel the March twenty-seventh council meeting. Um, and, and I need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. Um, so, for committee reports, uh, anybody, anybody have a, have your report?
Uh, Parks and Rec Commission meets, uh, next Wednesday at six o'clock upstairs in the, uh, rec center.
I have nothing at this time.
All right, that takes us down to department reports, we'll start with, uh, Director Wilson.
Thank you, President Garvis. Um, first off, potholes, we're dealing with a lot of potholes out there, we are, we are doing our best, I looked up, uh, since January first this year, we've completed three hundred and thirteen pothole requests. Those are the ones in our system that, that we've actually, you know, logged, so that doesn't probably include some random ones, so we're, we're, we're out there, and it's a, it's a constant battle, you know, we fill, the cold makes me plow them back out, we fill them again. Um, as far as salt goes, we're in really good shape, we are calling for some snow this weekend, anything, I'm here for, uh, three to six inches, but it, I guess it's northeast Ohio, so you never know, two to twelve. And, um, but we are in good shape, we have a barn full of salt, so we had a little bit of a wall, and we're able to get all of our salt in, so that's good. Um, finally, um, one of my supervisors called me just before, uh, tonight and said, you know, we're, we're struggling with people walking pedestrians out and about, like wearing white in snowstorms or wearing black at night. Um, so just a, a note to the community, if you can, put a vest on, I know some people that walk, wear a vest, and it's, it's, it's a, uh, really good thing, or just bright colored clothing, or anything at all that helps us. Our drivers are dealing with a lot out there already during a snowstorm, uh, man, the last thing we need is a pedestrian that we can't see, so make yourself visible, end of the report.
Can I add to that just real quick? I, I found when I was still working on the job, a lot of people don't understand the process of work, uh, walking against traffic and not with traffic.
Yeah.
And especially in our neighborhoods, like, uh, Ms. Brand and myself live in, Mr. Ferraro also, I believe, live in, you get a lot of people, they just pick one side of the sidewalk and that's it, I mean, and it's, you can't see a car coming at you, and if you're wearing the dark clothing, it, I mean, not even your face lights up or your glasses or anything else in the headlights if, if they're coming up behind you. So I think that's something that, uh, we ought to put out there too, is please walk against traffic and not with traffic.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Director Giaglatti.
Yes, uh, Dan, we're gonna try to help you out with those potholes by scheduling our bid opening for the road program and for the ledge road resurfacing on, uh, March seventh, so. I'll help your guys out, so. Uh, look for that in March, and then hopefully, uh, soon thereafter, we'll have a contractor recommendation, uh, for council. Uh, one other note, the Highland Valley View intersection, a project we've talked about many times in this room, uh, we're expecting the gas company to be on site next week to do some gas main, uh, relocation work, uh, so look for that, uh, there would be some, uh, short-term traffic delays, uh, but that's it, just so everyone's aware. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize for messing your name up, I'm new at this.
Doesn't matter. Been called worse.
Director Chaddick.
Thank you, Council President Garvis, wonderful to have you leading us today.
Thank you.
Um, we have a lot going on right now, planning for summer, I know that sounds awkward to say, while Director Wilson just sent a crew out to plow, um, we're like full bore planning for summer right now, though, and that Mac activity guide will come out next month. Um, we have, uh, the Mac rec renovation project, which will be the family changing rooms and the offices upstairs, that project is back on track now, thanks to JV working with me, so we made a couple adjustments with our, uh, financial end of things, it's all capital money we had, we just realigned a couple things to fit the project more appropriately, and we'll meet with the architect again next week, uh, to do a couple, uh, adjustments to the, uh, plans that'll eventually go out to bid in the next couple weeks. And then the final piece was, last week, we had the O P R A conference, which is our Ohio Parks and Recreation Association conference, and we had a good time there, had a lot of opportunities to network and meet with other cities, and we led three presentations, uh, Jim Clark led one of the presentations about aquatic safety, and then I was able to lead two other presentations, we had a lot of great feedback from people, and a lot of people interested in the state and how we operate, so that was really cool to kinda have tons of people throughout the state coming to us, trying to learn more about how we operate and teach them what we're doing, um, to meet the needs of our community, so that was kinda interesting to go through. That concludes my report.
Very good. Director Verris.
Thank you, President Garvis, and, uh, thanks to you at, at the, uh, Parks and Rec presentation, I got a text from our independence, uh, rec director, and it said you mentioned me twice, I hope I was in, in, in good, uh.
It was. I said if I yell at JV really loud, he gives us money. I'm just kidding.
No, but.
All good stuff.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning, uh, the coordination, 'cause that, that's basically what it is, so. And guess what? It's that time of year again.
Resident refunds?
Resident refunds.
Already?
Yeah, and they're due July fifteenth, unless you have an extension from Rita, under my report.
Thank you. Director Collins.
Thank you, President, congratulations on your position.
Thank you.
Uh, I have no report today, thank you.
No tickets?
No tickets.
Uh, would you look at ticket count? I don't know, I can look it up. I'd have to get back to you on that, or I could just make an arbitrary number of.
Commissioner Monica.
Thank you, President. Uh, welcome, uh, Mr. Ferraro, we're gonna miss you on the BZI, but I'm glad you got promoted.
Thank you.
Um, most of my inspection on the residential areas are for mostly water heaters, furnace and water heaters. Uh, and, uh, it, it's been painful to me to see, uh, these older people have to pay the amount of money that they have to dish out this year. Uh, for a furnace, eh, eh, in how, in the, uh, air conditioning, it's anywhere from fourteen to sixteen thousand dollars, to replace a water heater, it's fourteen to sixteen hundred dollars. And I always spend some time after inspection, explain to them that they, this is a program that, it's implemented through Enbridge, which, which is the old, the East Ohio Gas Company, and the water, Cleveland Water Department, where you would pay, I think it's seven forty-nine per month, but your water heater, the repairs or replacements complete. but your water heater, the repairs or replacement is completely covered. I would recommend not to do this in the first five years because after you install the water heater, you automatically have a warranty for about five years. But after, right before the five-year expire, I would recommend you go on this program. And the program is provided by HomeServe USA. And again, for only $7.49 a month, you know, your water heater is repaired or replaced free of charge. The same thing with the furnace and the air conditioning. I would recommend that before you hire a contractor, that you will talk to them and see if they're, they work with some programs that will give you some rebate. There is rebates up to $600 for installation of a furnace, probably the same amount for the air conditioning. And I think there's money out there. And if somebody has any question, they're more than welcome to call us at the Building Department, and we will give them more information about it. And this concludes my report.
That's good info. Thank you. Chief Ripley.
Thank you, President Garvis. We, month of January is a very busy month, a month for us. It always is every year. We did about 420 calls, same breakup amongst the communities, over half of them in Macedonia. The other thing I want to, needs to mention, it's not COVID, but the flu is really taking its toll on our community. The squad today had six very sick people that they picked up from home with the flu. So please be careful when you're out in the community. It is contagious. And, and it went through this building. It's gone through my department. So please be careful out there and wash your hands like COVID's back, and we'll all be better off. End of report.
Very good. Chief Yakupovich.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I wanted to remind people that the patrol officer and dispatch civil service tests are still open, and they will remain so until February 28th. I also wanted to thank Ms. Johnson for her donation. She's been a longtime supporter of the police department, and we certainly appreciate it. End of report.
Director Ghadetti.
Your report, Council President.
I did not expect one. Is there any unfinished business? Is there any unfinished business? Any new business? Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right.